Hello. Okay, please, everybody take your seats. We're gonna get started.
Well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Near East Side. Thank you for joining us at the beautiful, beautiful MLK branch of the Columbus Library for an exciting announcement about Columbus's future. So we all know that Columbus is growing. We know that our region will be home to 3 million people by 2050. Right now, too many of us, that growth is exciting. It means more jobs and more neighbors and more development. But we need only to look to the cautionary tales of cities like Austin or Denver to see what growth can do to a city. These are amazing American cities, but they're cities with a housing and homelessness crisis much worse than ours. Meanwhile, they're cities that have become playgrounds for newcomers who have moved to their cities for good jobs, but those cities are becoming unlivable for the working people that have called it home. Cities that have displaced some of their longtime residents. I liken this phase of growth that we are in to those scenes in a movie where folks are playing on the beach as the tsunami rolls in. You can see it off in the distance, and we know when it hits, it will change everything. Right now, we're in that frolicking-on-the-beach stage, thinking that it's far away. But the truth is that when the tsunami hits, it can wash us away if we're not prepared. Or if we are ready to channel the wave of new wet neighbors, it can be the rising tide that lifts all boats. That is the defining question facing Columbus right now. Can we get better as we get bigger? More people moving to Columbus is great, but what good is growth if it leaves behind lifelong residents and legacy neighborhoods? That's why today, my colleagues and I are launching a new commitment, Columbus Forward, a new policy platform dedicated to getting ahead of the growing pains and making growth work for all of us. We know that progress isn't just about the number of buildings that are being built or the number of families who come here. Progress is when every worker, every small business, every child, and every family shares in the success of a city that is growing and that their life actually gets better as our city gets bigger. Columbus Forward is a commitment that as we grow, we will fight to preserve the quality of life, the affordability, and the safety that makes Columbus great, and will make sure that all of our residents are experiencing the benefits of that growth. Today, you'll hear our first nine initiatives as part of Columbus Forward package. But in the months to come, we'll have even more, and we look forward to invite all of us, or all of you, to be a part of Columbus Forward. Now, I'd like to turn the podium over to President Pro Tem Rob Dorns, who helped champion and design this initiative. Press Pro Tem, Tim.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Before I discuss my initiative that's part of Columbus Forward, I did want to sort of pause and talk a little bit about why we're here today. Council has had a number of proactive policy proposals and packages during my time on council, going back to reimagining public safety in 2020 and 2021, Housing For All and Housing For All 2.0 that brought specific proactive legislation through this body to make our residents' lives better here in Columbus. As we've talked about, the individual ways for council members to lean in about being proactive to focus on growth, but also quality of life for residents here in Columbus. This Columbus Forward package builds on the success of those packages. We know that growth, as Council President said, is both a huge opportunity, but also a challenge. And while this body is made up of nine separately-elected officials, we all know that this challenge is meeting our community head-on. Rising rents, job opportunities that are oftentimes out of reach of residents, safety concerns, thoughts around what the cultural centers of our city will look like during all this development that's happened every single day in our city. This is a coordinated and thoughtful approach by each member of this body to rethink about how we, as a body, can be proactive to address these concerns for our residents today. That's why I'm so incredibly optimistic about the future of this city, because we have these leaders that are really leaning in to think about how do we get ahead of these issues here in our community. Talking a little bit about my part of this initial package of Columbus Forward, we know that we are in the midst of modernizing our zoning code. We've talked a lot about needing to modernize that code through the zoning initiative, going back 70-plus years since we've done this, to accommodate for the need for additional housing opportunities in our city, the need for new economic development. Yet, at the same time, we have not always had the opportunity to sit back and think about how are we preserving history in Columbus. Here on the Near East Side, we're in the middle of history of Columbus, and the key question is, how do we grow and champion our history while also making room for that new development in housing across our community? And also ensure that we don't commit the same mistakes of previous generations of allowing development to tear down every piece of a neighborhood. That is why I'll be introducing legislation to start an assessment of our historical preservation policies within the city of Columbus to better understand how we, as a growing city, can not only preserve our history, but also grow smarter as well. We need to make sure that those two things can coexist together to make sure that as Columbus grows, that we have an opportunity to make that growth more representative of our past and our future. So I'm very proud that we have the ability to make Columbus not just bigger, but better. And with that, I'd like to invite my friend, Councilmember Dick Bankston, to talk a little bit about his initiative in Columbus Forward.
Good afternoon, everyone. Let me just echo my thanks to President Harden, as well as President Pro Tem Dorns, for your leadership in getting us to this point today. Really exciting day for our city. It's been said before, but we can't stress it enough, that Columbus's growth is our biggest strength, but also our biggest pain point. Projects like Linkus will transform our city with better transit, more bike lanes, and safer sidewalks. Projects like the Capital Line downtown will bring our community together and strengthen the core of our city. But in the short term, that construction could hurt the very small businesses that make our neighborhoods strong. And we've seen it before: road closures, blocked parking, confusion about whether businesses are still open or not. Without support and a strategy, some businesses just simply aren't equipped to survive that type of disruption. My initiative, the Construction Impact Mitigation Program, is about making sure progress doesn't come at the expense of our small businesses. This program will contain a series of interventions aimed at mitigating the negative impacts of public construction. This could include things like phasing work, keeping corridors clean and safe, placing clear signage to identify alternative parking options and access points for businesses, and ensuring that businesses, business owners, and neighbors get timely, transparent communication on construction progress. We'll also aim to establish a fund to support businesses during the construction period should the other interventions fall short. Construction should never mean displacement, so protecting our small businesses during this pivotal transition in our city's history is a priority and is critical. Columbus's small businesses have been and always will be the backbone of our economy, and it is the soul of our neighborhoods, and they deserve to enjoy the benefits and prosperity that our growth will bring us long-term. You know, I'm really excited about this piece of legislation, because really, it shows continued collaboration. And this will work with the administration, different departments, but also I will be championing this effort. But I'm so excited to be working with my vice chair and our Chair of Public Service, Councilmember Laura Despero-Sade Padilla, who will be partnering with me on this work, because this isn't simply about how we make our streetskates better, but it's how we make our communities better. And really, all at the heart of this, and why I ran for office, is to say, how can we build a city that is more equitable, that's more sustainable, and that's worthy of the next generation? And we can't talk about that without sustainability. I'm glad that we have a champion in that, and my good friend, Councilmember Christopher White, who's gonna come now and talk about his initiative.
Good afternoon, everyone. We have heard the word "growth" already multiple times, and I can almost guarantee the next five people will also use the word "grow" for "grow" or some shape or form or fashion of that word. But Franklin County only has one landfill, and it isn't growing. SUECO's most recent estimates predict there are 40 years of capacity left at the landfill. And then, the question becomes, where will all trash go when it's full? We know it's not likely to be in any of the 40 surrounding communities that currently share it with us, meaning the cost of disposing our trash will go up for all of us. The good news is that three-quarters of what is thrown away could be reused, recycled, or composted instead. Through weekly recycling pickup for single-family homes, new reuse drop-off centers, and expanded food waste collection, Columbus has already made great progress increasing waste diversion. But too many residents and businesses still do not have access to recycling because their landlord does not provide it. That is why we are working on a multi-year phase-in plan that will ensure that, one day, every Columbus resident will have access to recycling services regardless of where they live. This isn't just about environmental responsibility. I am the crunchy-grinola one on council, right? That is my realm. But it's good economics. Recycling keeps waste disposal costs low, creates jobs in a circular economy, and enhances supply chain resilience. Plus, it does add the added benefit of curbing greenhouse gases. This initiative will extend the life of our landfill while building a culture of sustainability that will improve the quality of life now and for generations to come. And with that, it is my pleasure to introduce my good friend and colleague, Councilmember Berosa De Padilla.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. I also want to echo my thanks to President Pro Tem Dorns, and also, none of this would not be possible without all the folks who make this run, so our Legislative Research Office, our communications team, and of course, all of our aides, because you really are the wind beneath our wings and the folks that make this run every day. So none of this and none of this work would be possible without all of them. You know, when I joined Columbus City Council, I made a commitment to build a city where equity isn't just an aspiration, but a reality. And that work starts with access. Access to opportunity, to fairness, and to the tools that people need to thrive. When you apply for a job, you deserve to know right from the start what that job pays. And for far too long, salary secrecy has held too many people back, especially women, immigrants, people of color, and individuals living with disabilities. The lack of transparency enforces wage gaps that have existed for generations, and as a working mom and a Latina, this is a reality that I understood and still understand far too well. Across the country, women working full-time still only earn 83 cents for every dollar earned by a man that is only clothed by 25 cents in my lifetime. And over the course of our working careers, we stand to lose over half a million dollars. It's like an invisible tax that we put on women that could pay for so many other needs that she has for herself and for her family. And for women of color, women like me, that gap gets even wider. And those aren't just numbers. They're real families, they're real workers doing everything right, but still struggling to make ends meet. And that's just not fair, unfair, that's unacceptable. In 2023, we passed a salary history ban to make it illegal for employers to ask your past salary history. And now, it's time for the next step. I'm proud to introduce legislation to bring pay transparency to Columbus. This legislation will require employers to include a reasonable salary range in every job posting for positions based in the city of Columbus. It's a simple, common-sense policy that helps level the playing field for everyone. We're also making sure that small businesses and nonprofits who truly are the heart of our city have the support that they need to showcase the incredible workplaces that they've built. Pay transparency isn't new. It's already working in cities like our, right here in Ohio, Cleveland, Cincinnati, and Toledo. It makes hiring more fair, and it helps businesses compete, and it gives workers the clarity and the dignity that they deserve. Because let's face it, everyone, everyone in our community deserves a fair shot, and no one should be left behind simply because the rules were never made clear. Columbus is growing, and opportunity for all must be for all of us. Thank you for being part of this moment, and now, please join me in welcoming my colleague, Councilmember Otto Beatty.
Good afternoon. Other than the word "growth," the other words you'll hear from our council is about housing and the housing crisis. Before my time on council, I served over 30 years as an attorney, real estate owner, real estate investor, and developer, and that was in part, that was a big reason why I was chosen to serve on council. Columbus, as you know, is rapidly growing, and our housing stock must keep up with the changing needs of our residents and families. More seniors are looking for places to go and living with adult children. More families are supporting, are supporting loved ones with childcare. More people are returning home after college. Accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, are one tool that will help meet many of these needs. ADUs are self-contained, small self-contained homes that can be built in a backyard, in a converted garage, basement, or attic, or attached to an existing house. They're flexible, they're affordable, and practical. Right now, through our zoning code, our zoning code makes it far too difficult for families that want to build or create an ADU. You have to go through a long, expensive, and confusing process and go through the series of getting variances. Many homeowners give up before they even start. My initiative will cut through that red tape by making ADUs allowed by right, which means removing the unnecessary barriers and streamlining approvals. We will empower families to make the housing choices that work for them. Across this country, in cities both large and small, from Boston to Bexley, this type of legislation has been adopted in many communities. ADUs expand housing options, strengthen neighborhoods, and create new income opportunities for homeowners. In Columbus, they will help us grow smarter and more equitably, and help us, and help save families stay connected across generations. This legislation is already off to a good start. The public comment period is already open. The draft legislation can be seen on the council websites, and we're having public hearings as well. ADUs is one of the ways which we will help Columbus move forward. Thank you. And now, I will address, I will have my colleague Nancy Day-Aggar join us for her proposal.
Access to healthy recreational activities is an important part of physical and mental well-being, particularly for young people. These activities provide a safe space for kids to learn, play, and build relationships with peers while experiencing a sense of belonging to a community. Kids thrive when they are engaged in positive activities after school, on weekends, and during the summer. Columbus has a lot of quality youth programs across the city provided by a variety of organizations, but kids in some neighborhoods are missing out. We know that some kids have lots of opportunities and others have few or none. If you live in my part of town and your kid likes soccer, you got options. If your kid wants anything else, then they're out of luck, there's nothing. There has never been a strategic effort to map out youth programs, to determine program gaps, and duplicated efforts across the city. My youth programming initiative will change that disparity. My office is launching a comprehensive inventory and analysis of youth programs across the city that are operated by nonprofits and city departments that will enable us to identify specific gaps and overlaps in programming. We will then bring together youth programmers to collaborate on how we can collectively create a strategic plan that will ultimately result in recreational equity for kids living in every Columbus neighborhood. Additionally, this initiative will enable decision-makers to determine how to disperse grant funding for summer youth programs. The youth of Columbus matter. We need to ensure that every Columbus kid can grow and thrive, because when our youth are thriving, our city thrives. I would now like to introduce my fellow Westsider colleague, Melissa Green.
Good afternoon. Columbus is growing, and with that growth comes a lot of opportunity, but we cannot just talk about growth and not talk about the fact that as the cost to live and work in our current economy continues to rise faster than our wages does, there are more and more people across our community that are struggling to get by. And we see and we feel that every single day around us, when one in four kids in our neighborhoods are experiencing food insecurity, when one in four people in our community are experiencing mental health challenges, when last year alone homelessness in our community rose by more than 7%. And as our city has continued to grow, and then consequently, the needs of our community have continued to grow, even in the best of times, we would have needed to have this conversation right now about how do we do more, about how do we scale our investments to meet the challenges that are ahead of us in our growing community. But we also know we're not in the best of times. We know that looming state and federal budget cuts threaten to strip away critical resources, and we also know that without immediate local intervention, who those cuts are gonna impact the most? They're gonna impact the most vulnerable people in our community the most, and the people that care for our people the most. And so that's why, through Columbus Forward, we're supporting a comprehensive, community-wide effort to meet these challenges head-on by securing new, permanent, dedicated funding to invest in what matters most: our people. Investments that can strengthen housing stability and expand access to physical and mental healthcare, and substance-use treatment, and crisis services that can make sure that families' basic needs are met, everything from food to the daily essentials. And what I'm talking about here is more than just funding programs. It's a new way of funding strategically, investing in people's well-being at every single stage of life, about making sure that our neighbors don't have to wait until they're in crisis before they can access supports that they need to thrive. Recognizing that prevention and early intervention are not just the most compassionate way to do this work, but they're also the most cost-effective and they produce the best outcomes. It's about shifting from unreliable, unstable funding with limited local control to reliable, locally-guided solutions that we actually know are gonna work right here in our neighborhoods. I think traditionally, people have always seen the role of local government as being primarily infrastructure-related. We keep your lights on, your roads paved, your trash picked up, your snowplowed, and I don't want anyone to worry because we're gonna keep doing all of that, too. But right now, we have both the opportunity, but especially in this moment, the moral responsibility to begin investing in a new way, in another type of infrastructure, in our city's critical human infrastructure. Because it's not our streets, or our lights, or our bridges, or our buildings that are Columbus's greatest asset, it is our people. And it starts right here today, not just through one-off initiatives, but through comprehensive, holistic policymaking that both address the root causes of the hardships that people are experiencing, things like pay inequity, things like safety and crime, things like the lack of housing availability. But it also has to include in that plan assurances to make sure that when someone in our community is experiencing hardship, that we have strong systems of support that are there to see them through. When we talk about moving Columbus forward, we mean everyone. Making sure that every child has a strong start, every family has a safe place to call home, and that every single person in our community has the dignity and stability and well-being and opportunity that every single one of us deserves, so that no one here gets left behind. And so now, it's my distinct honor to introduce my friend and my colleague, Councilmember Emmanuel Remy.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Council President, Council President Pro Tem for bringing this forward today, and all the people that you see standing back here. It's not done without a very strong, supporting cast. Columbus is growing. More people, more events, more nightlife. That is a sign of a healthy, vibrant city. But growth without guardrails invites preventable harm. We can't afford to only act, react after something goes wrong. The Safe Cities Initiative takes a proactive approach to prevent problems upstream, respond smarter when they arise, and make it easier for residents to be a part of the solution. So here's what we're gonna do under my initiative with Columbus Forward. We're gonna modernize short-term rental oversight. We'll tighten registration and compliance, focus on repeat-problem properties, and give neighborhoods a clear path to report issues so responsible hosts can operate and families can sleep at night. We're gonna strengthen liquor enforcement. By improving coordination, we'll target chronic bad actors while supporting the well-run establishments. Safe bars and nightlife should be a competitive advantage here in Columbus, not a liability. We're gonna have safer public events and clear standards. From block parties to large festivals, Columbus is a city full of festivals and events. Organizers will have consistent, transparent requirements, and city teams will have a unified playbook. That means safer crowds, faster permitting, and fewer last-minute surprises. And finally, we're gonna upgrade our online reporting system, crime reporting. Our current system's outdated. We'll make it easier to use so residents can report quickly, get feedback, and help us spot patterns before they accelerate. Across all four areas, the through line is data and coordination. One team, shared information, faster decisions. The result: fewer nuisance properties, safer streets and venues, and a public that feels seen, heard, and protected. This is how we balance growth with safety and build a Columbus that's bigger, brighter, and safer for everyone. Thank you very much, and I'd like to turn it back over to Council President.
So far, you've heard eight initiatives that we believe will literally move Columbus forward in a way that is uplifting, protective, supportive of all. And here's the last initiative we are gonna add today. What we know is that all these folks moving to Columbus need a safe place to live. We can't just rely on traditional development models, we're gonna need creative, community-driven solution, and that's the vision behind Yes in God's Backyard. You've heard some folks say, "Not in my backyard," when they don't want new neighbors in their neighborhood, and others respond, "Yes, in my backyard," when they want to be advocates. Now, there's a new national movement of churches saying, yes, they want housing in God's backyard. Across our city, many faith-based institutions are asking how they can keep their doors open and how they can better serve their congregations. At the same time, they have something precious to build on: side yards, parking lots, or extra land. Nationwide, we know that faith organizations own more than 47,000 acres of surplus land, much of it right here in the middle of our city. So by updating zoning procedures and permitting processes and offering technical assistance, we can empower churches and other religious organizations to repurpose that land into desperately needed housing. Last month, we met with over 40 faith leaders and housing leaders at Shiloh Baptist Church just up the street, leaders who let me know that they are hungry to work with at the city on developing housing for their community on their land. I heard a call to expand what ministry looks like. I heard a call to expand what ministry looks like. This is about helping congregations live out their values in new ways by creating affordable apartments on a vacant lot, by turning underused space into affordable housing, by activating land that sits idle today for families. We've seen this in cities like Charlotte, and Atlanta, San Diego, and Portland. They're all moving in this direction, and the early results are promising: more affordable units, more community engagement, and more hope for people who need a safe place to live. So Yes in God's Backyard is bigger than a policy change. It's an invitation to a broader base of problem solvers. It says, "Solving our housing crisis isn't just the job of developers or government. It's something that every sector, including our faith community, can see themselves in." Our city is at its best when everyone has a role in building our future. By unlocking these properties for housing, we can bring more people to the table, we can tackle homelessness and housing instability head-on, and ensure that Columbus grows with vision and with purpose. So we thank you all for being here. I want to echo my colleagues in thanking our teams, from Communications Team to the Community Affairs Team, to the Legislative Research Offices, to the individual offices who have already been working on these initiatives. As in the past, you will start to see hearings. I think we have one tonight. On ADUs. You will be invited into community conversations. We encourage you to go today to columbusforward.us to see all of these initiatives in detail, and we invite you to be a part of this process. We are going to take individual one-on-ones, but I'm going to turn it over to our director, Jose Rodriguez, to explain next steps and how we can have a conversation.
Thank you, Council President. We're ready to do one-on-ones. I know several of you had asked for some, so just come to either myself, Joe, or Brad. We'll help you out. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Everybody. Hello, Jordan.
Are you going to do the one-on-ones right now? Okay. So, Miss, is that the one? Yeah. So, do you want me to kind of stay where I am?
Yeah. Move to your right, just a little step. Me or no? Yep, ready.
Okay. All right, so tell me about this ADU initiative. It seems pretty unique here in Columbus. Of course, the cost of living is very expensive here in New York, so it could help.
Absolutely. It certainly won't solve our housing problem, but it is another cost issue. And we're really taking a page from states and cities from the western part of the United States who probably about five years ago adopted new legislation pushing this different type of housing. It is a formal housing. We all like to watch the tiny houses and everything like that, but those same tiny houses can be placed in the backyard, those same garage. I also have a personal connection because my own eighty-year-old mother lives in the ADU at my sister's home. But right now, in the city of Columbus, the zoning code...